And rather than make you all sit and wait, we'll begin. I'm Sally Rhodes and I'm a trustee of the village. Tom Rocco is a trustee of the village. And tonight is just an informational meeting and to answer all your questions, because I know there are many. Our clerk is here and she'll maybe make some notes. Katie Bunker in the back. And our water attorney, Dave Murzic, is here. And so, without further ado, I'll introduce our engineer, Rich Ruth. And I'm sure you all know Blue, and if you don't, you should. He is our superintendent of the Department of Public Works. So.
You want to begin?
I certainly will. My name is Rich Ruth. I'm with Breneil and Larry Ossen engineers. We've been the engineers for the village since 1956, so we know the infrastructure inside and out. We're here to discuss the sewer project on Grove, Mill Rock, and North Oakwood Terrace. As you probably know, everybody is on these streets are tied into old sewers. This sewer, I'll give you a little history lesson, was called the Henry Hasbrook Sewer. And it was labeled that by a gentleman by the name of Thomas Poe. He got that information and placed it in a report in 1931 that these sewers needed to be replaced. So, I will have to say that this village board finally, after eighty-four years, is taking it upon themselves with some HUD grant to replace these sewers. In addition, the DEC, the sewer, the village is under consent water right now by the DEC for sewer overflows throughout the village. If the village does not comply with these, a myriad of mandates, this being one, replacing these sewers, is subject to fines of up to $35,000 a day, which would obviously add to everybody's tax bill. So, this sewer project has been in the works for a couple of years now, and we do have approved plans by the DEC. And this is the only set of plans that they approved, okay? We ran a couple of scenarios by them, and this is the, this set of plans that they approved. I just want to go quickly over where the sewers run now. They're basically backyard sewers, which were private sewers, built, you know, prior to 1900.
Which, that was everybody can see.
Here is Mill Rock Road, North Oakwood Terrace, and Grove Street. These sewers currently run through backyards and everybody is connected haphazardly, probably prior to 1900, to these sewers. The village currently has no means or oversight for maintenance and operation of these sewers. They can't get into people's backyards. Bottom line is, if the sewer breaks here, North Oakwood Terrace, and these folks on Mill Rock Road up here cannot flush their toilets, okay? Let's say it's February 23rd, there's three feet of snow on the ground, you can't find the blockage. Blue and his crew can't get in to fix these sewers. So, it's, let's say it's a long time coming. Just from this Thomas Poe report in 1931 till now, you know, the, the DEC has mandated that these sewers be placed within the right of, village's right of way, okay? So, you know, and I've heard, you know, I've been coming down to the village since 1983, and I've heard the DPW superintendent since then complaining that they have no access to these sewers. And there, there are constantly blockages, breaks, and things like that. So, the, the basis of the project is to take and decommission these backyard sewers and place them within the right of way of the village. These old sewers, the consent water is based on the overflows. The village, back in 2003, was cited by the riverkeeper to eliminate these sewer overflows from inflow and infiltration. That means that when it rains, there's so much water that goes into the sewer that it erupts out of the manholes and onto the streets, and it's a, it's a public health hazard. The village, for the last five years, has gotten, because of this, we've gotten almost $600,000 a year in grants to fix sewers. You might have seen our sewer projects down on Huguenot Street, Henry W. Voice. There's been a lot of sewer work going on. And luckily, the village has been able to obtain probably about $2.4 million in the last forty years to fix sewers, you know? And this has not been, the levy, the tax levy has not, the burden has not been placed on the taxpayer. And this has been completed by the village and has basically kept the DEC happy and moving ahead with eliminating these sewer overflows. So, moving forward, we have, we let a construction contract out for the replace, for the installation of sewers on Mill Rock, North Oakwood, and Grove Street. Sewer construction is, is beginning now, and residents on these streets will be required, probably in the spring. It's not going to happen now. We have to get the sewers within the right of way first. They have to be installed. The main sewer work has to be completed in the rights of way in, in the village prior to anybody hooking up. So, nothing is going to happen, and nothing is going to be required right of way. Any type of hookups will be completed probably next spring and summer. But the DEC is requiring that everybody does hook up, okay? Cost of hooking up the individual residents is currently being reviewed by the village board, okay? They're taking into consideration possible financing, and we have the winter, they're going to be considering all options. We have our attorneys looking at it, and we'll be having some type of informational meeting probably later on in the, the winter, probably early, late winter, early spring, to discuss financing options for hooking up for all these residents that have to hook up. Now, it's a big project, okay? I've been involved in projects like this. I just did 130 residents up in Haynes Falls, New York, in the town of Hunter, in conjunction with New York City PEP. And they actually disconnected from their septic systems and went into a public sewer system. And everything went well, and everybody's very happy with their sewers. I think something that, that really has to be emphasized is the age of the sewer, well over 100 years old. It's all clay tile pipe. I've seen all the manholes, most of the manholes that can be seen are either concrete block and stormwater flows into them, surcharges the sewers, and I'm sure there's residents here that can attest to that. Creates a, a public health hazard. This has to be eliminated. This is, this is, you know, technology that was okay 100 years ago, but this is like one of the last remaining enemies in the village that still has these really old sewers. Now, there are older sewers in, within the public right of way that are going to be replaced in the future, but these backyard sewers, you know, frankly, Blue and his crew cannot get in to service them. So, that's, that's the impetus for this project. It's got to happen, and, you know, people are going to have to hook up, and the village board is going to look at options for, you know, financial assistance to, you know, the homeowners. It's, it's, it's just inevitable. And it's inevitable, and I'm going to say it is really a time bomb, you know? I live in Hurley, you know, and the city of Kingston has sewer problems consistently, and the sewers are collapsing, and these old clay tile sewers are, you know, they're, who knows when we're going to have a major failure.
Can you talk more about the financing aspect of this?
Well, that, that, that...
I'll talk about that, Jeff, in a minute.
Except my daughter's Mallory, Ruth, you know.
Mallory?
Yeah, Ruth. I'm going to use a program.
That's a nice question, and you approach it because you have every group.
I know. I know, I saw it. So, I just wanted to, you know, emphasize the gravity of this situation from an engineering standpoint. I see these old clay tile sewers, we have collapses. Right now, we're working on a project on Platico Avenue. Basically, that old clay tile sewer, the bottom is falling out. If that sewer collapses, we lose service to, I don't know, how many residences, how many streets, part, part of the college. Now, these sewers were put in prior to 1900, and right now, we're designing with a HUD grant to replace those sewers on Platico Avenue, which the DEC looks very favorably upon, okay? The, the individual streets, you know, I have plans up here showing where the, the connections will take place. I have an inspector in the field full-time, his name is Steve. See Steve out there. At some point, he'll be, you know, asking you where, you know, would be the best place to place your lateral connection to the main sewer. And, you know, we'll place it to the best of our ability, and we'll be able to get the sewer from your house to the main line.
Do you replace everything back in the backyard?
What's that?
Do you replace everything in the backyard?
We are not doing anything. That's one thing I wanted to say too. In the backyards, we're not doing anything now. That doesn't, all of the construction is going to play, take place, excuse me, within the village's right of way, right to the back of the sidewalk, okay? We wanted to extend these sewers as far as we could into your lawns. In most cases, it's 15, 20 feet, maybe 25 feet to the, you know, the front of the building, but we wanted to, you know, take as much of this money as we could and extend the sewers as far as we could to your property line. You'll see a little snake there, and that's where, you know, you will hook up eventually. It's not going to happen right away. It's not going to happen this, you know, this, this year, and we can't, you know, undertake instruction in the winter, of course. So, you know, we do have some time to discuss the, the options for tying in to the sewer.
So then, supposed to, the pump that I have to buy, it could be in my front yard?
There, if you do have a residential pump station, it's, it's small, usually, you know, that's going to be your choice, but there, normally, what we've used is, they're called E1 systems.
But would it be in my front yard? Because in the backyard, it'd be in the middle of my pool.
Excuse me, sir, what, what street do you live on?
You know, I live at Woodhouse.
Which house?
Number three.
Number three?
Yes.
These sewer lines are going to be designed deep enough that all ground floors can take gravity sewer. The only way you will need a pump station or a lift station is if you have a finished basement. And that doesn't include a washing machine, because a washing machine can pump up.
All right. In other words, you don't know what the elevation of the sewer in the, in the street is going to be.
I know what the elevation of the sewers are.
Okay.
Basically, it's six or seven feet, and...
One, just, are you done with your presentation, or do you want to get the questions right now?
Some organization.
No.
Okay, you're fine.
You ready, you ready for questions, Rich?
Or do you want to continue with your presentation?
Uh, no, I think I've, you know, put all the information I need to put out there.
You've certainly made the case that it has to be changed.
Oh, okay, and just one more thing on, on the case that has to be changed. We received the HUD grant for this. We got 600, our contract price came in at $625,000. We received $600,000 of that through grant money.
So we don't have to pay for it?
Okay. The village is paying for the $25,000 for the install, initial installation of the sewer main in the public right of way.
But we have to pay for it.
That's yet to be determined? I cannot answer that question?
I think we want to get to...
Yeah, let me get to that, let me get to that point, because this is the last piece of the puzzle, and thank you, Rich and Blue, for sort of giving us all the technical data. In terms of the dollars and cents for homeowners, this project, the $625,000 project, covers the work in the public easement, in the public right of way, running the new sewer down the street. Like any hookup, individual homeowners are responsible for hooking up to the new system. And I believe there are, how many? Thirty?
There's thirty. I just wanted to say that the residents of Mill Rock Road, there's the old sewer there, they will be reconnected to the, the new sewer coming in, so there won't be any requirement for the residents on Mill Rock to extend the sewer from their property out of the sewer line.
Well, I haven't quite gotten to that part yet, but thank you.
So then, you're saying it's an additional expense for the homeowners?
I am. Let me, let me finish what I'm saying, and maybe I'll answer your question.
So only the 2.5 million paid for sewerages in the village?
I, I know. Let me finish, and I may answer your question, maybe not, we'll see. The village is not allowed to work on private property for obvious reasons.
Nothing's obvious.
I'm sorry, that is a good, that is a good one, actually. The village is not allowed to work on private property because, most, most importantly, financially, it's an incredible snowball effect. We do work in your yard, that means we then have to do work in this person's yard over here, that person's then gets to fix the sewer. There are also legal restrictions, which I'm not qualified to get into. Maybe our, one of our attorneys could speak to this if, if anyone's curious about it. But the bottom line is that as a, as an organization, the village government is not allowed to work on private property. Now, it means that you, anyone who needs to hook up to the sewer line is going to have to do so at their own expense. And I understand that many people may not be able to afford that expense. It's a, it's a surprise, even though we know it's not going to happen until next spring, I believe, at the earliest. It still may not be enough time. So what, the one thing we are looking at most, most hard, the one thing we're looking at most diligently is that the village has a pot of money called a revolving loan fund that we have in existence to give low interest loans to local businesses to do facade improvements and streetscape, you know, kind of Main Street improvements, Main Street revitalization loans. We have spoken to our attorneys, and we are going to be, I believe I have the consensus of the board, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, that we are going to be rewriting that, this entire criteria to offer low interest loans. I believe the one number, the only number that's been tossed out, the highest number is 0.5% interest on a five-year loan to repay the cost of hooking in the system, to at least make it affordable, and space it out so that it's something you can swallow rather than being hit really hard with an unexpected expense.
How much would something like this cost?
The connection from a, a house to, let's say, the typical distance is probably 15 to 25 feet, probably, you know, $4,000, something like that.
That's a lot of money.
Yeah, it is.
That other vintage residents aren't paying to have the same sewerage plus the toilet.
It's, it's money that they, that they had paid in the past, and when the dollar was worth more, to be honest.
And why can't, what happens with all that 2.5 million to get sewerage work? Why can't?
That money is going towards the main that's going into the road, and the laterals are connected to the property.
And then if you need the pump, how much is that?
A residential pump station is probably $3,000 to $4,000.
Okay, so you're talking about if you need a pump, and that's just like $7,000. Shouldn't, shouldn't the village be paying for that pump? Because we're going to be paying for that pump when nobody else has a pump? And our taxes, we pay twice.
We're subsidizing the village for other people's sewerage, because we are going to pay for it in our normal tax rate, and we are going to pay for it by having to pay another $7,000.
Plus the electricity to run.
Plus the all-time maintenance and electricity.
So how is that equitable?
And these things are notorious for breaking down really quickly and having to be replaced.
Wait, 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 wait. Residential pump stations, I just talked to my engineer that we deal with for E1. They have approximately 5,000 of these pump stations up in Clifton Park that have been in operation over 35 years with minimal maintenance. It's, it's a tried and true installation.
They're getting all the blind interactions of the drucal, and they have been recent, and they have been much worse than 35 years.
It depends on what type of pump you use.
And then where are they?
I'm sorry, Sally, you had a point you wanted to make.
Pumps are only going, pumps are only going to be needed if you have finished off your basement.
And I might have my finished off basement, because I worked on my basement for 25 years, and it's finished, and now you're talking about $7,000. Why do I need to buy that pump? Because you're fixing the sewerage, fine. Hook up, fine. But then you're saying now I have to have another $3,000, $4,000 for a pump to have the same sewerage work in my house as everybody else who pays the same amount of taxes, and so I have to pay twice for the same thing.
We've got some other folks up close, Gene, and then, yes ma'am, and then Leonard. So Gene, go ahead, please.
Let me back up here. I want to be very clear about what you're going to do in the, in the main sewer and when. What is the timetable for redoing the main sewer?
The main sewer will be completed by December 31st of this year.
Of this year?
Or we don't get the HUD grant.
So you complete the main sewer, December 31st of this year, and then we'll wait for the spring, and then you will begin, and completing the main sewer means completing the laterals, but not connecting it to the house? So we'll still be operating with all sewers into the spring, right?
Exactly.
Okay, the next question is, and this is my last question. On the letter you sent to us, it states that if your house sewer, it doesn't say house, but if the sewer connects to the street, then, if the, if, that is, if your sewer currently does not connect to the street, a new sewer lateral will be needed. I want to make sure I understand correctly. Is sewer lateral different from the sewer that comes from our house?
The sewer lateral is the sewer that comes from your house.
Okay, so if we already have a sewer coming from our house connected to the main street, then that will be preserved?
That will be reconnected.
Reconnected.
Thank you, Gene. Yes, ma'am.
We, we have a barn store on Grove Street. We have Seven Grove Street. We walk down steps to get to our house. It's a brick house on Grove. And we were talking to Steve today, because we were outside gardening, and they were looking at, it is, you walk down steps and there is a wall. And what they're saying with ours is that they're going to have to go through that. Well, we don't have a finished basement, and all we have is a washing machine down there, but that was an original house that had, the house next door was a barn. My grandfather bought it in 1909. That was a barn next door that was made to a house. I know there's a sister, or there's a something right there next to my father's house, my brother's house now. And that's the one that's going to be, you know, ours, I think, is going to be the, the star expense operation from what it sounds like. It's not a finished basement, but right now, I know we're going through Peter Bear's property because he's our backdoor neighbor. And I understand why it has the need for it, but I think ours is going to be more than just the average expense. And it's not because we have a finished basement. It's because we have one of the old houses. I mean, Mill Rock is a young, younger group of houses. So what you're saying is Mill Rock is okay. It's Oakwood and Grove Street that are going to be the problems.
Is there anything restricting the depth of the new sewer line to accommodate everyone's load?
Well, there is, the, the restriction is the slope that you have to lay the new sewer line at to meet the existing sewer line, either on John Street or Main Street. So, you know, there is a minimum, and we, believe me, we placed it as deep as we could to meet the maximum slope that, or the minimum slope.
Because John's pretty flat when it comes across Grove.
Yeah.
I mean, it really comes down, and then it flattens out, and then...
Well, and that, that sewer continues on Grove Street, down through the woods, and comes back out on Prospect Street.
So there's a chance that maybe...
There's a chance that we might meet that slope, but I really don't know.
Normally, you know, I, you know, we'll, we'll take a look at every case, you know, on a case-by-case basis, but on average, it's a six or seven foot deep sewer, you know? And down toward John Street, it goes down to like 11th Street, 11 feet from Grove.
I mean, I believe it was Steve that said our house was moved out at 1931. Maybe you mentioned it.
You're talking to you for no day.
That it was mentioned.
Oh, yeah. You said our house had been mentioned in 1931 as having an issue with, with the sewer.
Yeah, possibly. I have to go back, but I really can't speak to that now, but...
Yeah, it's a brick house on Grove.
Yeah.
Leonard, and then this gentleman here?
Okay, I guess, first off, I would ask that every member on the board and the village engineers have received a copy of the letter that I sent?
Yes. Yes.
In October, I asked Blue Twiliter what was going on. "I don't know, wait till the plans are getting done." Only for me to find out that these plans right here are dated October 13th. I thank you for that. You had those, somebody had those, and I got no assistance. Approximately 25 years ago, Claude Stone, whose son I met in Lowe's about two weeks ago, explained to me that there is, and their family put in a lateral pipe behind the houses on North Oakwood Terrace. I didn't know anything about pipe then. All I remember is it looked like the Caribbean Ocean, it was blue green. Let me finish, please.
Can I cut you off, please, right now, on that, just for now? Remember, is Linda here, Frederick?
No, she's in Michigan right now.
Okay, remember, remember for yours, I took over superintendent in 2002. She had a sewer problem at her house. Louis S. was the contractor there. "We worked in your backyard illegally, sorry on my part..."
You're correct.
"...because I was going through a learning curve." Okay? I was very young when I took this position over. We dug that pipe up in your backyard by shovel. It was clay tile. It was not PVC.
Go to Bill Flanagan's backyard. He's got a manhole that they put in with PVC. If you like, I'll take my backhoe down in the backyard and dig my entire backyard up, and if we find it down, let the village pay for all the hookups.
And then Frederick steps in, she's a desk.
Okay?
All right, I'm not going to argue with it.
So there are a whole variety of problems here, but the depth and the slope of the backyard leading to John Street, a John Street hookup, if you want easements, I own 18 North Oakwood, I, I own 18 Grove Street, 20 Grove Street, 19 North Oakwood, 15 North Oakwood. I'll give everybody easements to run their lines through there. The only person that I haven't spoken to are the Harps. But the electricity goes out of this town from time to time. Those pumps that you tell me about, I have a daycare center down there. Every five years, I'm putting new pumps in there. Myers warranties them for one year. The electricity goes out, that means that nobody can use anything. Poop flows downhill with gravity very easily. One way or another, you have to get this straightened out. To tell me and the rest of the people here that we have to spend between $4,000 and $7,000 for the initial hookup, and then continue each year to pay for the electricity, the noise, the replacement of the pumps, it ain't right. It just isn't correct.
Thank you, Linda. You said, and then you... I have some technical questions, so I'm going to direct them at you. I'm here representing St. Andrews Church. I actually work for the Health Department in Orange County, and I review sewer lines and things, so I, I know the trouble you can have with the DEC. And I also understand that just because plans are made, it doesn't mean that they've been approved that, you know, you can count on, because we've gone through many renditions for certain things. But to get to the actual question, I infer from what you said that you are going to put the sewer main down the middle, down to the street, and then stuff it out to the outside of the, the property owner's side of the sidewalk for them to put the connection in at that point? All right, I also am inferring that you know that there will be certain places where the LSC, what was sewer, sewerage below, level of the house, basically, where your pipe comes out of the house, whether you've got anything in the basement or not, is going to be lower than the pipe in the street, so that there will have to be some mechanical method of moving the, the effluent from the, from that chamber. Now, St. Andrews has two buildings on the same piece of property, and I know I checked in, in the website, the TaxMac website today, that the church and the vicarage are both on the same tax lot. Now, apparently, that's where that Y is on your plan there, where the two lines come out and they join together. Yeah, right there. Will St. Andrews be able to hook up with a single connection, or are they going to need two connections because of the two buildings, even though it's a single tax lot?
Single tax lot, they can hook up with one connection.
Okay. When will it be possible to find out what the elevation of the sewer in the street is, so we will know whether we need to put in a pump station?
I can have my inspector meet with you, whatever's convenient with you.
Okay. Try to do that quickly.
Yeah, my guy Steve's down here now. He can certainly meet with you. You'll see him around, and you can certainly call.
We understand that that problem with the electricity being out in the pump stations is severe. In Orange County, and I can't speak for anything else, we require that there's a 24-hour reserve capacity in the pump chamber, so that even if the water doesn't go out, because you're not on an electric well, but you're on city water...
Minnesota water.
You still have... you still have a period of time where you're safe. You can still use the facilities before it becomes an overflow situation. And so the forced mains are committed. Does that mean there's going to be a manhole that the forced main will come into? Or will the forced main go right into the sewer main?
The forced main will just go into the lateral that's extended to the property. Okay, let's say it's an inch and a half force main. It will just be tied into the lateral and flow into the sewer.
Okay. And also, based on what you said, you do not want house sewers to be put in before you put the sewer main down the street. You want to wait and then everybody knows where that stub is that they have to get to.
Yeah, this is, the contract will be completed well before anybody ties it.
All right. St. Andrews is in a position where, what I'm saying right now, I'm not absolutely certain of. But I don't think we know exactly where that Y connection is that we're going to have to come off of. So how would we determine where we would ask for that stub to be put in? To, you know, come across the sidewalk?
I would say that probably a meeting in the field would resolve a lot of these problems with the inspector and just getting in there and seeing where, you know, where actually your connections are now. That, you know, to place the sewer lateral on an optimal location where, you know, you have a little leeway. And if it was a forced main, it can be run in a myriad of different...
Oh, yeah, if it's a forced main, you'd see...
Of course, of course, you know, so...
Yeah. All right, last question, I am going to direct it to you. Would it be possible for the town to contract an excavation company and try to get deals if people want to, you know, basically they get a...
Like a bulk purchase?
A bulk purchase, yes.
I don't know, David, do you know off the top of your head?
You can do that if you choose to.
Yeah, the issue sometimes becomes with the contractor, whether you can guarantee him X number, X number of hookups. He said, you know, if you do one to three, the fee will be this much. If it's one to 10, the base rate would be less. And then there's linear footage, usually with a linear footage journey after that. And if it's up to 20 feet, it's X price. If it's 28 feet, it's this price. 35 feet, it's this price. But it can certainly be done.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd also, it may be worth looking into. And also, of course, as Sally reminded me, there's nothing preventing neighbors from simply getting together independently without the village government's involvement and negotiating a price. Because everyone's going to probably call Lance anyway, so...
All right.
And the gentleman with the green sweater, and then you, sir, and then...
Thank you for your answers.
Earlier someone said that you were going to be working with homeowners to determine the best place to hook up to the system? Okay, well, my concern was that it was demarcated with the little blue lines for the system to come in on the south side of my house.
That's, the blue lines are for water.
The blue lines are for water.
Yeah, they have the mortgage.
I needed to come, I need the sewer to come out on the north side. That's where the plumbing is. I don't want to have to run a sewer line across my house to make a south, okay, that's on the south side, so... That's what my concern was. Are you going to be talking to people?
You can, anybody here that wishes to call my office, 255-1980, set up a meeting with me. We can meet with the inspector. We can mark it down exactly where you wanted to come in or out.
I appreciate that.
That's fine.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. And then you, sir.
Are all of these sewer lines going to tie into John Street? They're all flowing towards John Street?
No, actually, Mill Rock and Grove are flowing toward John Street. North Oakwood is flowing toward Main Street.
Toward Main Street.
Yeah, we're actually doing a, we have a permit from the DOT to do a directional bore under Main Street from North Oakwood to hit the manhole right there on, actually, it's on South Oakwood.
And how far down is that sewer line on Main Street?
Sewer line on Main Street is probably four or five feet down, but, you know, it actually decreases in elevation heading down toward Main Street. So, actually, the depth of the sewer lessens as the road comes down toward Main Street. You know, it lessens as you head toward Main Street. But it's deeper as you head up North Oakwood.
And so what about the people at the end of North Oakwood toward John Street? Are they going to have, will there be enough pitch for their sewer lines coming out of the house to be able to flow towards Main Street without being pumped?
That has to be determined on a case-by-case basis. It's, you know, fairly, it's, I try to maintain the minimum grade coming from the sewer that they're going to connect to, which is actually, you know, engineering terms, 0.4%, and which is acceptable to the DEC and the Health Departments, of course. But in general, they're, you know, I would have to say six feet deep. I kept them as deep as I possibly could while not running into other, there's water lines, sewer lines, gas mains, and as deep as I possibly could. I've designed, I've been doing this for 30 years. I've designed a lot of sewers. A lot of sewers are here, Kingston, wherever. But I try, you know, you try to keep them as deep as possible for people to exit their, you know, their residence or business and, you know, hit the sewer by gravity. That's just common engineering practice.
I'm sorry, Jeff, I'm sorry. Jeff has been waiting.
So my question is, it seems like this is all decided already. This is planned, you're going to start and doing it in the street. We're going to have to hook up. We're going to have to get pumps. And Leonard has offered all his property right away in the back, all his properties. And we're all willing to give it out right away. But it seems like it's all decided already before we even get to, like, discuss it because you heard what he had offered and the property he owned and the people he's spoken to. But you've decided this is exactly how it's going to be done. So why are you here now?
It was actually a judge in the DEC who decided this is part of our consent order.
What was his suggestion?
We actually don't have an option. We have to do this work.
I know, no, I'm not saying about the work, but was his an option of how to do it? Of giving the right away to all his properties when we went to the DEC?
No, it's beyond my...
I'm sure Mr. Lowe's would not like a 20-foot wide gravel right away through his backyard.
Well, you have to ask Mr. Lowe's at first. And, because he talked about the right away in that moment.
My understanding is that part of this consent order is that the sewer line has to be in a public right of way. And an easement doesn't meet that requirement. It's, an easement is a temporary, you can do certain specific things on my property. But public, I mean, public is public, you know?
And my next one is, I'm just asking you that I believe that, I feel that the village should pay for the pumps. Because it's an additional expense that no other homeowners have to have for their taxes. And that's another $3,000 that you're putting on us. Everybody on North Oakwood Terrace on my side is retired. Everyone is a retired person on a fixed income. You know, and you're saying $7,000. And some people only have to pay four. So you really need to look into that and...
Jeff, we will take it.
And if this is a green project, adding electricity and running things on electricity is not so green, is it? I mean, you're the Green Mayor. Be green.
Well, sewer...
I got nothing to talk about.
Sewer isn't green.
I'm sorry, maybe additional electricity?
Ma'am, you were next, and then Reba.
I'd like to question on Mill Rock, are the new sewer lines going in on the east or west?
It's going pretty much right down the middle. And on Mill Rock Road, they're just going to reconnect you.
And then Reba, please.
So you mentioned that the sewer, the depth of the sewers would be around six feet. What is the depth of the current sewer?
There is no current sewer on North Oakwood and Grove.
Oh, okay, there is no sewer.
There's no sewer there. That's why we're putting the sewer there.
Here's the map that's currently in place. The dash one is currently in place. Mill Rock, there is a sewer that's going to be reconnected.
I think the question is how deep is the existing sewer that parallels the street?
Yes, thank you.
You mean the one that runs through to yours?
The one they're using now.
Well, it varies in elevation because it heads down. The elevation changes dramatically.
Bonnie, what is your question?
I see, Bonnie and then Gene and then...
Lonnie was next. Mayor, sorry, Lonnie was next.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, Leonard.
Yes. Am I correct that the responsibility of the lateral is with the homeowner?
Yes.
Okay. Am I correct that the, so then the pump station, for those on North Oakwood that is proposed, the design and construction and implementation of that lateral and the location of where that pump station is going to be, is the responsibility of the homeowner?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You can give the pump.
Well, in any case, in an area that doesn't provide for a pump station to be within the building, it's going to be outside the building or the fact of the matter is that you have nothing to do with it, so it's essentially what the homeowner has to deal with.
I believe it'd be the latter, yes.
Thank you.
And Bonnie?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, you said on Mill Rock, we're just going to be connected. So that means we don't have to put in, so what is that blue line on my...
That's where the water line is because I have to mark out where the water line is.
So we don't hit...
And the sewer line through the water. And Mill Rock is going to be reconnected to Main Street.
And then Gene and then Henry. Leonard, yeah, your turn, Gene, thanks.
Okay, I have gotten a little bit confused here because a few years ago, a memorial that I can remember because I slipped down the stairs, we had a problem with our, what I thought was our sewer line. We actually ended up calling the village and someone came out and they were looking, because we live on Grove Street. They were looking at a sewer line down the middle of Grove Street. That's what they were looking at. And someone ran a snake towards that. Now, I can see how someone could run a snake, I'll just stand up here. Here's Grove Street. I can see how someone might run a snake towards that, but I just recollected the, the person who came from the village was looking down the middle of Grove Street, which made me think there was some kind of a sewer line down the middle of Grove Street, or that was...
It crosses and there's private laterals. Which residence on Grove Street?
19, corner of Grove and John.
He's right at the corner of John and Grove.
The southwest corner.
It had to be a private plumber. We have no manholes on Grove Street. We have one at the intersection of John Street and there's one, there's one to the south towards Main Street, which runs down past, through his property, through Peter Bear's yard.
So then my, whatever happened that day is not as relevant as what I'm asking now because we have something running from our house to that dotted line then. Let's assume that, right? What guarantee is there that that will be good enough to meet the new sewer? Because you stated in your letter that if you have a line, you say if the building sewer connection currently extends into the street. Now, I'm supposing ours does, but I'm not positive. So how can we get a confirmation that whatever line we have is going to be at the right pitch and extends far enough to connect with your lateral?
He's on the south or southwest corner of Grove Street.
Okay. Yeah, that's it, right there.
I mean, we'll take a look, you know, that, all I can say is we're going to take a look at where that is and put the lateral which dominates your property.
I can say that my house at 20 Grove Street and a vacant lot at 18 Grove Street, the line goes toward the Episcopal Church. There is no lateral in the middle of that road. Now, where it goes from there, I'm quite sure Peter Fairweather ties into it. And where it goes from there, it probably hooks together with a line that comes under Howard Foster's barn or Helen Guton's, for those that you remember, her property. And then from there, it probably, I'm guessing, I don't really know, probably travels down through Peter's property.
Yes, it does.
Henry was next.
My question still remains about the placement of the pump because I am absolutely sure that I will need to get one. Can it be placed in the front of the house? If not, I have a stone wall that would need to be destroyed to hook up. I also have a garden bed that would be destroyed. And then there's a cement logway that would need to be destroyed. Then, when you get to the back of my house, there is an approved town or village pool. I don't want to sit next to the pump while not at the pool, which would mean it would have to be the far end of my property perhaps. How much will this cost? Much more than your $3,000 or $4,000 estimate, I would assume. Where is the placement?
Well, that's what we have to look at these things on a case-by-case basis.
So I'm going to be $10,000 or $11,000 on a fixed income as a retired person? Double taxed? Oh!
I really can't speak to that. We're going to have to look at everything on a case-by-case basis. And then the village board is going to assess the financial assistance that may be given at that time.
Yes, yes, ma'am, and then Leonard again.
Yeah, I have a feeling we're going to be, that's one of the cases. And, you know, the gentleman we were talking to today, very pleasant. And I'm sure he would be willing to talk to anyone about it. They were very, you know, amiable to speak to us. There was no problem with that and has to be done. But if we wind up, you know, like you're saying, you get village water and sewage if you live in the village, you pay village taxes. But, you know, like these gentlemen are saying, we're going to be paying for village water and sewage and we're going to be paying additionally because we are now in this special area of, our property was too low to meet up with this. So we are going to be paying additionally, even though we are village residents. And as village residents on this side of Henry D. Boyce Drive, we are concealed and we pay village taxes. So it is really, there's an unfairness that is, you know, I mean, I don't want you to sound like a five-year-old and say, it's not fair.
You don't.
But, I mean, you know, I think it's something to be considered. I mean, you know, there's a lot of us on Grove Street that are older also and are retired. So that's another thing. So, I mean, it is something to be thought of. And it's really not quite fair that the people on the other side of the street are not paying for those sort of things.
And it probably devalues the property as well. Thank you.
Pardon?
She said it probably devalues the property as well.
What?
All this, extra payments and...
I would think if you were on a new sewer line, properly hooked up, it would not devalue your property, it would increase the value of your property.
Plus, you have a pump that you are paying...
Not everybody is going to need pumps.
But it doesn't matter, there are people here that need pumps. We know. Frederick's needs a pump. She has a finished basement, she tested it. She has a finished basement, she needs a pump. She just retired. She is living in her house alone. And now you're talking about seven-plus thousands of dollars for her. And she said, I can speak for her. Because she lives there alone, she is retired, and she is going to need a pump because her basement is finished. Oh, well? No, not oh, well, because like she said, why are we paying double? We are supposed to get water and sewage like everybody else. But we're not paying, we're not going to be paying what everybody else is paying. We're going to be paying more.
That's called an inequality.
When Platico Avenue is done and it's next on the broadcast, okay? If people hook directly in to the lateral, that's fine. Some people are not going to be able to, and they're going to have to pay too. But they're going to have to pay too.
But it's not right. How is it equitable that we get sewage and water and we pay this much taxes? And now you're talking about additionally?
Well, you know, I have a new question. Can I just ask a question?
There are people waiting to speak patiently, and I'll get to you if you want to.
But explain, taxes do not pay for water and sewer in the village of Mill Rock. Never have. You are using pay-by-user rate.
I'm sorry, sir, you were next, I believe, you've been waiting patiently.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, the sewer easement runs through my property. And, you know, I've heard a lot of talk about devaluing the property. I mean, I've had major floods, every rainstorm of raw sewage running out underneath my barn and across my four neighbors' properties as well. You know, they asked me to just say, we're, in their behalf, ran right in Rich's basement window. So, I mean, we've been suffering for quite some time with the current sewer situation. And while, you know, I understand there are a lot of issues. I mean, I really welcome something being done with sewers. I understand that there are some issues beside that, but, I mean, this has been something that's had a major effect on some of us. And, you know, my three neighbors have kids that play in their backyards, you know? So when it overflows and raw sewage comes out, it's really unpleasant. And it's actually eroded away a good section underneath my barn.
But I don't think people are saying they're against the sewer.
Sorry.
No, I'm not saying that either. I totally understand that, but, you know, this is a situation that needs to be addressed. And, you know, it's, they're attempting to address it. I mean, it's obviously something that, you know, has had a major effect on people in the past.
Let other people talk, please. I'm sorry, it's a re-.
Oh, just saying, you know, we've been suffering with the current situation for quite some time. You know, I think, I welcome anything being done that addresses that. I mean, and, you know, the DEC, I mean, I was tempted to call the riverkeeper a number of times, because, I mean, who wants that in their backyard? I mean, I can't... The current situation is that if I try to put a table in my backyard, I mean, I would be smelling raw sewage. Because that, there's just a cover on a concrete box that, you know, everybody's sewage is running down through my property from three streets up or two streets up. And, you know, that's our current situation. So, yeah, it's a good thing that something's happening. Now, you know, I understand that things are not that easy for people. And I've done a lot of digging on the property and footpipes in, so I know kind of what people are dealing with. It's not a simple thing, there's a lot underground.
Thank you, ma'am.
Is there anybody in the elected government or staff who is tasked with creatively looking at the possible solutions for the private cost? I understand you've secured a grant for the public cost, and as a taxpayer, I'm glad about that. Is there anybody who's tasked with looking at creative ways to support the private cost? Because the private cost sounds tremendous.
The village board and our village attorneys are looking into that. It's really a legal and financial issue. Also, working with our village treasurer, like I said at the beginning, the best I could come up with, you know, there's a case to be made that this is a project cost and we should be able to pick it up as part of, you know, the grant or whatnot, but that's just not the case. It's, you know, it's a difference, what's the difference between de facto and de jure? You know, the real world and the legal world. We just can't pay for it outright. So the best we've been able to come up with so far, in thinking creatively, is using this, rewriting the, repurposing our revolving loan fund and writing it in such a way that it would cover other circumstances like this, not just this case in particular, but emergency situations of where the village can't intervene financially. With the least we can do is try to get financing that's lower than you would get from a bank or from any other private.
And at a very low interest rate.
It's my first public meeting, so...
Ah, welcome.
I'm requesting, as, you know, as a voter, is that can we please look into other options besides a loan is still a cost, and in fact, it's more a cost, because I have to pay interest. So I'm requesting that we, as a village, that you for us, and maybe we can circulate some information around and share email addresses. I want a grant. I'm not sure, I don't know anything about this, but I want to at least look into that. Our team, I want to know there's a team and there's somebody responsible for looking into that for us.
All I can say is we have looked into it as much as we can, and there may not be anything else we can do.
So you feel like you could ask for all the resources publicly?
Other than homeowners applying for grants themselves, possibly.
What about lowering the check?
I think, hold on, yes, ma'am, and then Leonard, and then you, then you go.
Just because I understand, you know, I pay for my village water depending on how much I use. And I know we're responsible for certain things to the road, for Central Hudson. Whatever, you know, our tree came down and we were responsible to the road. I think the argument, you know, the part that bothers me not is, I mean, my house is lower and it's gonna be one of the deals. But I don't mind so much paying, I mean, paying to have the hookup. What bothers some is that I will have an additional cost per month in running this pump. That's the part that's a little bit iffy, you know, to me, in comparison to other people don't need a pump. So now this property needs a pump, which makes it a little bit inequitable for village. I mean, I don't know what else, you know, to say that way. I mean, I don't mind anybody who uses more water, I need to pay for more water. But if I have village water and sewage, it would seem I have village water and sewage. I don't have to have something additional to gain that.
As I tried to say earlier, and I'll say again, even if you didn't have village taxes, you, water and sewer is a user-paid phenomenon. It does not get paid for out of village taxes at all. It's a separate thing.
No, and I pay for that, but what I'm gonna do...
You pay for that.
Is higher than the price for water usage than the person on New Pauls. She uses how many, you know, gallons, you know, hundreds of gallons this quarter, and I use how many hundreds of gallons this quarter. I'm paying more for it than she is, because I have to pay to have it pumped. You know, as opposed to, I mean, you know, it's going to cost me more than it's gonna cost someone else in New Pauls. So different parts of New Pauls are gonna be paying more for their water and sewage than other parts. That's what makes it inequitable. That's what, that is more prob... I mean, I understand if my property is lower than somebody else's property, that I will have to pay for that additional fight. I understand that. But the fact that I will continually pay more for water and sewage than somebody living on Grove Street doesn't have an other side, you know? When I grew up on New Pauls... You're not understanding what I mean here?
I understand what you're saying, but we have numerous other users that already have pump stations.
Oh, yeah?
Yes, we do.
All right, okay, okay.
You know, prime example, thirty-two North, I'm sorry, they're commercial. Gateway has a pump station. Bosse's has a pump station that comes all the way from their facility all the way down to my market.
And it's pre-existing?
They had...
No, they're not.
They paid to install.
But it's commercial.
There's numerous residents within this village that have private pump stations at their own cost.
And why did they, why do they need them? In order for the hookup also?
Yes, they want a finished basements or a hookup. The village code reads that if you were within...
So it's your choice.
The village code reads that if you were within one hundred feet of a public sewer main, you were required to connect.
I see.
It doesn't matter whether the sewer main's up here and you're down here, or vice versa. You have to connect.
All right, well, what are people doing?
There are other locations with pump stations.
Leonard was next, and then Jeffrey.
How much money is available in that revolving account that you were referring to?
Just over half a million dollars.
Okay. Last, the other thing I would like to say is, I'd like to leave this paper in the front and ask that all of us put your name, your location, email address, so that if we need to correspond to each other, that we have a connection. It's optional, you don't have to do it, you're more than welcome to if you'd like. And as soon as we get this, we will make contact. But we need to be kept
Aggressively.
In the loop of this. This can't be the only meeting that we have. You know, this was, again, two thousand thirteen, and here we are now. I don't want to find out, "Well, you've got five days to hook up." That ain't happening. And I'm not going down easy on this one, I'm telling you that right now. And I'm quite sure my neighbors on Oakwood are not going down easy. So, I can tell you that right now. Regardless of what the law says, whether the law's right or wrong, laws are challenged.
Thank you, ma'am.
First, I want to say I'm not against having new sewer. I mean, come off like that. It's, you know what I mean? I'm just talking about the additional expense. And like you said, well, when that woman was there was saying that we paid, we're gonna be paying additional and that you can't pay it at a village or the pumps, then maybe we should get a tax rebate for all of us that have to do this. If that's another...
We're not allowed either.
What?
Water and sewer are not taxes.
Not as much as you think.
It'll cost a lot of money.
What was your response to the tax rebate idea?
We're not allowed to, we can't give different tax rates for different uses.
Except we're paying different than everybody.
But you are, we're paying twice.
Water and sewer is not tax.
Maybe you had something, you had a comment about that.
I wanted to say that, you know, people are saying it's equitable. First of all, when you're a community, you share the burden, I think. Second of all, on Oakwood, I know, there were so many of these houses that were meant to be single-family houses. And we have all these people that have bought these houses, and there's six and seven and eight college students or whoever in there. So, guess what? If you have to pay a little bit more, tough.
Yeah, but tough, you don't pay it.
Because it's a... I'm not, I'm not talking about charity. Are you a charity, do you rat moves?
No, but I'm talking about, it's not a way I know about it.
I pay taxes on my property, not on charity. What I'm saying, it's my property, can I just say one thing? If you have property that's lower, and we didn't have public sewage in the town, and you needed to pump that water up to your septic, guess what? You'd have to pump it up to the septic. You picked the property that you live on, just like I picked it. My property is what?
I'm looking at thirty years, I've never had a problem.
All right, folks, rather than, rather than speak to each other, you talk to us and...
But sewage is important.
Yes, sir.
Taking the long-term view, I don't live in New Pauls, by the way. But I own a home, I have a well, and I have a septic. My home would be worth more if they put sewers down the street and I connected to them. That's the payoff.
I live in Hurley, New York, I wish I had a sewer.
If I, when I go to Septic.
Well, that's a good point, though. I think the frustration is that these are folks who already have sewer. Not people who don't and are connecting new.
Fortunately, we heard from the man who's got a sewer in his backyard, and the kids want to play. And that should not feel like...
Do you have to put a new sewer in and hook up?
What was that?
Do you have to put a new hookup and all that that we have in humps?
I have a huge pipe.
No, but do you have to hook up to this new system? No, do you have to hook up to this new system?
No.
No, so he doesn't have to hook up to it. I feel very badly about getting the sewage, but this is an additional expense for you. It's for everybody else.
I'm, listen, I, you know, you can come and look underneath my barn anytime. And I will show you what that water has done.
So she says, "So you're gonna chip in with us?"
All right, folks, I'm sorry, folks, please, again. If you're gonna debate and argue and complain, please do it to us and not to each other. So it's our job to get talked at and complained at.
I just want to reiterate something as the village's engineer. The existing, this doesn't have to do with anything about, you know, hooking up or, you know, cost burdens, but the existing condition is a time bomb. It is a time bomb. Within the next few years, this is a clay tile pipe. If it breaks, nobody can flush, okay? Let's say it's February twenty-seventh, my mother's birthday, at two o'clock in the morning. He can't get down there to fix the break, nobody can flush, okay? For however long it takes to find this break to allow the village DPW onto a private property, which is illegal right now, nobody flushes. There are forty-some homes that will not be able to flush the toilets. Okay, I just wanted to make that statement. I'm not talking about the burden of cost or anything, but I'm just talking about from an civil engineering standpoint and a public health standpoint. Yeah, I know, I know. I just wanted to kind of outlay...
Thank you for putting it in context. Because I think, look, I think, because we're getting repeat offenders, it's not the right word. We're hearing from a lot of the same people over and over again.
It's unbearable.
And I'll get to you, Henry, please, just give me one moment. I haven't heard any opposition to the project itself as, in terms of getting the sewer out of the backyards into the street. The obvious problem, the only problem, is the paying for it on the individual homeowners.
Burden of the sewer, yes.
That is a word, yes. We are, we, the village government, are under unfortunate constraints. If I could sign a piece of paper and have the village pay for all of this tomorrow, I would in a second. Yeah, says, and then she would yell at me for something about the budget, not she, but...
You'd have to get two more votes.
Right. Technicalities, technicalities. This is imagination. I wish that were the case. I really wish that were the case. It's not. And we're, and so, we're in the uncomfortable position of having to approach our own neighbors with an uncomfortable proposition, which is, between now and next spring, we all have to figure out the most equitable way to pay for this. Now, the village can't pay for it out of our pocket, right? We've come up with one idea of the point five percent or, I don't care, I don't care, zero percent interest loan.
No, we have to.
Oh, we'll just share our responsibility, we have some, regardless.
That's why we're making it as minimal as we can.
Minimal interest loan is one option. It may not be the only option. Maybe there's more creative thinking that could go into this that is beyond me. And I don't, but we've got a little time, you know? This is not a matter of, in five days, we're gonna get the letter. You know, we're gonna get this stuff in the street, you're gonna see that construction. Nothing's happened over the winter anyway. And then in the springtime, we gotta make sure that people get connected to this new updated sewer before that ticking time bomb goes off. And that's our deadline, and that's what Rich was reminding us of.
Is there a deadline?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, excuse me. Yes, you are, but if you wouldn't, because it was a current-up question, sir.
Is there a deadline to have this completed and everybody connected?
Rich, Blues...
Well, you know, we do have an approval for this sewer construction right now. The DEC, it's not really cast in stone. I'm sure it'd be reasonable. I think they're looking at next spring, next summer sometime.
They want it all completed by the summer?
They would like, yeah, the old sewers decommissioned. That was the main thing, decommission the old sewers. In fact, we worked with two DEC engineers from bottom to top and top to bottom. You must decommission these old sewers. And, you know, and, you know, under the threat of penalties, you know? Major, major...
Thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars a day.
Yeah.
And what happens if the village doesn't pay it? What are they gonna do?
Len? Let somebody else get in, please.
Neil, Len is to speak before me.
Well, Len is not, he's not up now. You can speak, Len is not up now.
All right.
I love Len.
Actually, I believe I had the floor, right?
And Len is smiling.
I was just gonna be saying, the mayor has the floor.
So, folks, my point was only, my point was only this, was that this is not, we've got time. We've got time to figure this out. It may not, it may not be the best situation for everybody, but what's that, if we can find that spot where everyone walks away angry, isn't that a sign of a good negotiation? Is that what it was?
No.
I don't think so.
I can't remember the cliche, no.
I don't think so.
No, no, when everyone, no one walks away getting everything they wanted, that's what it was. But regardless, I could use your help, we could use your help. If any of you want to, want to help us solve this, or please sign up on that list that Leonard has got it.
I think Len has got a good idea here. Everybody sign that, okay? We'll make copies of it, you know, get it to the clerk's office.
Well, get it to the clerk's office, and anything that comes up, she can just...
And then anybody, and then anybody can access this, if anybody's got any ideas. It's a very uncomfortable situation for everybody.
And we're gonna meet again, I think it'd be a good idea to meet sometime over the winter again, if we have time to think about this and adjust it a little bit.
When we've had time to talk with people and place new laterals, you know, somewhere along your property, you know, after we have, I get a good asphalt map, finding out where the best optimal place to place these laterals, to speak with each and every one of you, come back together and try to figure out how to do it.
But, Richard?
Henry's been waiting very patiently, can we have, let him speak? Henry has been very patient.
Historically, the statement made about those businesses, whether they be businesses or private properties, were their choices to change their basement. This is not our choice, it is your choice. That is very different, very different. I did not choose to do something. The places you spoke of chose to change something. I chose to change nothing. You chose to change.
Yes, yes, yes and no.
So your examples are no longer valid.
You are right, but we are not the regulatory authority on this. We answer to New York State.
So we're trapped in the rock and hard place. Tom and then Bobby, please.
I've got a pragmatic question that assumes this ticking time bomb will be taken care of and we'll find some financial means to take care of it. What happens to decommissioned sewer lines that run through people's properties? I guess I have two parts to this.
I can answer that pretty simply. Normally what we do, it's called a flowable concrete, it's called Kcrete, and it's done from the village right away. It's basically like a slurry that's pumped down... It's basically like a slurry that's pumped down, and it's kind of like, you can dig through it, okay? Um, actually, the DOT, State Department of, uh, uh-
Transportation.
Transportation uses it all the time to fill, um, a decommissioned pipe, so that you can dig through it. And what it does is it, it, it just plugs the old line, so you don't have any depressions or anything in your property. And it flows down pretty easily. We, you know, actually have a bid price on that, um, for the contractor to do, you know, to decommission the old lines. And what, what they do is it's basically, is they stick a, you know, a tube or a pipe down, a hose, and it just pumps it down and it flows down.
So that's inclusive, my second part of that question, that is a village responsibility and it is part of the game.
They're, yeah, they're, they're gonna take care of that, yes, the villagers are gonna take care of that. And, and believe me, the DEC has highlighted this. You must decommission these sewers. And, and I changed my drawing three and four times to highlight that fact. It wasn't, you know, I had small lettering on the plan, so you must make it bigger and bigger and bigger. This is what, you know, the regulatory authority-
Does that process protect, the gentleman over here has had years of problems with, basically, it sounds like an open well or sewer in his backyard, so he's not gonna have a collapsing backyard, and he's not gonna have to pay for anything that will make that safe, right? That's part of it.
Well, that's a part of the decommission.
Was that both questions, Tom?
Yeah, yeah.
That, that is the intent.
So if all the dotted lines are decommissioned, are gonna be decommissioned sewers that get filled with this, this Kcrete?
Right, it's pumped, it's pumped into the-
Okay, does that affect the water flow in general in the, in the village?
No, actually, these are sewer lines, so, these sewer lines are not supposed to be taking any stormwater now. That's, that's the crux of this whole problem, is these sewer lines take stormwater, which ends up in our sewer plant, overloads the sewer plant, that's why we are under consent order with major fines pending. That's, you know, that, that's the problem. It's not, sanitary sewer lines are not supposed to take stormwater, raining water, groundwater, infiltration, inflow. And that's, that's what we're up against with the DEC now. And, and if the DEC doesn't have this consent order, then the riverkeeper's right behind us, right behind them, ready to sue the village.
Only you have a question.
I just, I'm, I'm drawing my comment.
Sally, you have a question.
But, but, three things that we don't want to forget. One, Blue offered, if you aren't sure where you're connected, call him and he will come and help you ascertain that. That may answer a lot of questions. Two, somebody asked, can the village, and Dave's gonna help us figure this out, can we contract on your behalf, okay, to have this digging and if you need it, connection's done? So we need to, Katie, will you make a note that we need to do that? Two, it may be cheaper in the long run for you and neighbors to get one contractor in, and I think we could probably guide you, and Blue could guide you in that, and get it all done together, that may be cheaper in the long run. And four, we really, as a village board, are trying to investigate the financial ramifications, because we know there are. This is, we're not talking a little bit of money. And so we are going to try and come up with the best solution economically that we can offer you. It may not be what you necessarily desire, but we're gonna try and help do this as cheap as possible.
So?
You, sir, and then, ever.
Great.
And just following up, Sally, are there other communities in the area that have experienced this kind of thing recently that you could look at? Uh, where?
You mean neighborhoods?
Or other, uh, towns or villages?
Rich?
Well, um, normally, this is kind of a main technical situation, it's a- It's something that's been kind of a theme in the village's side since this nineteen thirty-one, you know? I had worked in municipalities, most recently in New Falls, and hooked up from a septic, a hundred and thirty homes, thirty of them being home stations.
And is there an existing sewer line there?
No, there's not. No, they, they, they all ran the septic. So, septic systems, and, you know, they had to tie it to this facility.
And do you know how the finances will work out in terms of the private hook up?
Um, actually, that, I think that, that was mandated by the New York City Department of Environmental Protection, and they gave them all the necessary. This is, this is very eighteen, you know, municipal sewers like this, it's, you know, and really, this is one of the only ones, and I've worked in a lot of municipalities, in Olster County, Green County, Delaware County, you know, all around. And I haven't really seen anything like this, but it's just been lingering for, you know, most of this has been resolved. These, these situations have, have been resolved. The village of New Falls used to have all of these private sewer systems, and they all had different names. This was the Henry Hasbrook Sewer. And everybody that built a house upgrading, shook their hand and died in, and said, "Bye, ten feet," and, you know, it's, it's very, it's very typical, but it's something that's gonna be addressed.
Tom had something, and then you, you-
And Blue, Blue just reminded me that I told an anecdote not so long ago about this project. When Helen and I lived in Buffalo, we had hundred-year-old storm sewers. They warned us of a catastrophic failure, they dug up the street, they reconnected, but they charged us for the reconnection. We, however, did not have to contract individually with a plumber to do the work. They had a plumber who fixed each of the lines, but we were charged a fee per foot to connect from our house to the main. And I believe, if I'm remembering correctly, that the fee at that time was much less than it would be now. The fee was, I think, twelve hundred dollars. Yeah, it was not a very long distance, so.
Ma'am, and then Jeff.
I'm just curious, and I apologize for that, God, they're leaving, but, um, do we have a sense of how many homeowners will need to pay? And what that, what the total ballpark might be?
Approximately thirty?
Thirty homeowners?
Thirty, almost.
And is there like an average price of some or more, some or less?
Rich, what, what would, what would that be?
More or less like three to, three to five thousand dollars per homeowner, that's, that's my estimate. Um, you know, everybody's house sits, you know, at different distances away from the street. So if you're fifteen feet, it's gonna be less, if you're twenty feet, you know, twenty-five feet, it's, you know.
So it makes, it makes me wonder, um, is, somebody else might know more about this than I do, but do we have any opportunity to go back to DEC since they're mandating this and with the New York State?
No, they just want to find- No, they're, they're, uh, there are, there are state-regulated loans.
Could you say something about DDP, and it made me, made me think?
Yeah, that's, that, but that's in the watershed, that's-
It's New York City, New York City has a different rule.
That's, that's a whole different animal.
And so does the city of Buffalo, which Tom was referring to. We're gonna, really, we're, we're very, very concerned about this impact for you. Yes, we are under consent order, but you also have a tough thing to face. And we're gonna try and help do that with you as best we can for the least financial impact for all of you in the best way we can together.
Jeff, you have a comment?
Years ago, there was a grant for people in the village who had, who's had under a certain income. So retired people and low-income people were eligible for like new storm windows, some kind of thing like that. And I was wondering if there could be an income criteria for this.
Well, Bonnie, if we, if we can do what we would like to do by tweaking, and, and please know, our attorneys are looking into this, and there is a teeny little loophole that we think we can go through. Because the revolving loan fund, as Jason said, was intended for Main Street revitalization. But we're hoping, because we have a fairly good sum of money in that fund, that we can tweak it in such a way as Dave and Will Frank, our village attorney, recommend. And we're gonna, the board's gonna be doing that in the next month or so, um, doing all of the changes we need to. And the thought on the table now, that we cannot, legally, as Jason said, the village cannot do this for you. But we're gonna try and help you do it for very minimal interest over a five-year period. So, Bonnie, the fund that you're talking about, people had to, the interest rate was fairly large. The limit was five thousand, I think, if I'm remembering the fund you're talking about. And I think it was a three percent interest.
At least twenty or twenty-five years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
But then it was forgiven or something, and it became a grant at some point.
Yeah, you always had to pay it back. You weren't eligible unless you were at a certain income level.
Right, that's what I'm saying, they're talking about people that are retired and have real hardships.
We're looking into the equivalent. We're looking into the equivalent that exists today.
Right, so that's-
But a, a much cheaper interest rate.
Things change every year.
Okay, when you, when you-
You know, uh, government funding changes the mechanism and the mechanics of it changes every year. And it really, it's a full-time job just to keep up with, you know, how, how these things work.
All right, Jeff, your question, please.
When you decide on if you get this way of loaning the money, you will notify us. It won't be like a year, or like a commander couldn't get the information. And the other thing is, are you gonna go to the largest amount of who, what somebody's gonna have to pay? Because you said you go up to seventy thousand dollars if you have to pump and stuff.
It would be the, the loan, the total amount you would be in for that, yeah.
And then my next question is, when you tear up, I don't know what, really what it entails, are you gonna put it back the way it was? So it looks like the way it was?
No, they're not tearing up, you're hiring a contractor to do that.
Oh, so I have to pay to tear up the dirt and then put it back to the garden back? But you have to argue with the contractor, not the village. Okay, so I have to do that.
But the village is gonna try and see if we, as Dave suggested, if we can help get one contractor at a much cheaper rate.
I know, when you rip it up, well, we have to rip it up, you have to put it back the way it was.
No.
The three thousand-
But it's not on the street, then. You said it's on the street, so it's in the backyard.
No, what are we, what we're doing now, the contract now, is within the village's right-of-way. And when the, the sewers are put within the streets, we're going to repave the streets.
We're gonna, we're gonna have one main sewer line down the middle of the street, and then the one, the lines come, we'll do the last-
No, 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 oh, yeah, in, in front of your house, for the sewer work, that's all gonna be restored.
But if it goes into our backyard, it's still, so this is still going in our backyard?
It's not, no, no.
It will run from the start?
It will run from the street to the inside of the sidewalk. Whatever is done there is gonna be restored back to what it was. What, anything, nothing is gonna be done in the backyard.
But I can put, so I can put my pump right in front of my house?
You can put it in front of your house, you could put it inside your house, there, there are small-
Can I ask you a question, specifically? When you put two plastic fittings together, let's say with a T, there's a sweep in one side, which directs the flow of the sewage in the correct direction. You put it in backwards, you're gonna have nothing but plugs. If the determination of where the stations are going to be, or the hookups, or the people's houses, are they going to just knock a hole in the line, or is there going to be a T to access that main sewer?
Are you, no, the, the main sewer line, like, the, the actual lateral is gonna be a six-inch SDR thirty-five lateral with a sweep to the directional flow to the inside of the sidewalk.
So I understand that, but from, from the fifty-foot width of the property, where is the determination where that pipe is going to be?
That's gonna be made in the field with, with the inspector.
Okay.
That's what, that's what, I have a guy out there, right now, resident engineer-
So he's basically gonna determine left side or right side?
You, you know, that's what he's gonna determine, exactly where it's gonna go. Where the best-
To avoid trans-
No, no, they're gonna put the lateral in, that is not what he is, his man can do.
Oh, you took it. Yeah, here, here's your property. Does it go here? Do you have a tree here? You wanna put it on this side, or you have a sidewalk you don't want, you, you know, wherever it's-
You just said the bad word. Sidewalk. Who's gonna pay to fix the sidewalk? You're gonna stub to the curb, that means we-
No, we're going under the sidewalk.
Under the sidewalk.
Inside of the sidewalk. The sidewalk is gonna be restored to better, better than what it was, if, if it is. You know, basically, what they're gonna try to do is, of course they do, to bore over a stub there.
So you're going to cover sidewalks?
Yes, you're gonna have to touch the sidewalk. The sidewalks are not gonna, you know, that, that is not coming upon the property, the village's sidewalk.
If you weaken the trees, they come down, they come down.
Well, that's why we gotta figure out where the best place to, to cite these laterals.
Gene, I think I saw you next.
Just a very quick question, what you just said, what you just said suggested that the determination of the lateral depends upon, questions independent of what's, of what's, of what's current line extending from a building.
Yeah.
So in that case, if you have a line extending from your home, it doesn't necessarily follow that you're, you, you won't have to, to pay for anything. Because it sounds like, excuse me, it, it sounds like the determination of, of the lateral into the main pipe is independent of the line you have coming from your home.
Independent.
That's not what the letter said. The letter said that if you have a line extending from your building, you won't have to pay for anything.
You can decide where you want, where you want the lateral connected.
If the lateral-
That's what, that's not what it said.
Rich, Dave mentioned, but Dave mentioned.
If it currently extends into the street, okay, then it will be tied back in.
Then it will be tied, no matter what.
Right.
No matter what, yeah.
You don't have to worry.
It will be, they're gonna find it and they're gonna tie it in.
Okay.
That's, that's typical protocol.
It's the people who come out the back and go underneath, those thirty.
Henry, then Jeff.
No, Henry, I'll switch. Just to address a question about the trees, as an environment, a person with graduate work in environmental education and science, a healthy tree will deal with disturbance to its earths. Just to address that question, you're talking about the roots are cut. Yeah, that's what they're cutting, yeah.
So we could have both of the roots, we'll take the tree can. If that's where I pump it, because I don't wanna go that, ten feet that way to match that.
Did you have a question?
I have a question for you.
Rich?
Rich.
Rich is being on you.
I know. So if the tree's like right in front of our house, which is where the plumbing tends to be, the kitchen, the bathroom, you'll go, you'll cut the roots and just go in, right?
We're going to the inside of the sidewalk, Jeff.
I know, but, but I know where I'm going.
There's a tree in between.
The tree goes right on, because it's lifted aside.
They're gonna try, you know, I mean, every case is different, Jeff.
You go to my house, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Make an appointment.
With you.
I know you.
Mister Two Order, it's two five five nineteen eighty.
That's correct, and also the email address is dpw@newfalls.org.
We try and open up a lot of these things. And that, but that's not, if you walk straight from the root to the house, that's what I'm saying. I don't wanna go twenty feet that way to get away from the trees and then come back and forth. That's what, and there's a short term, that's a man, doesn't make sense. I'll take the tree out.
We're gonna take, we'll take a look.
He's gonna go to your house.
He's coming.
Him personally.
Him personally, right? Rich roof?
All right, Reba.
I have my kids.
I have absolutely no understanding of engineering, so I'm just curious, why is it that no one needs pumps right now?
Because it flow, because basically, okay, here's North Oakwood. It flows, there's old sewer lines that flow down through the backs of the property at lower elevations.
Under, under-
So that's why?
Underneath-
Additions, sewer roads by gravity. Barns, residents, people over the years have built over top of them, never moved them, they run through. It, it's just a disaster waiting to happen.
Right now, if there's-
It's happening.
Right underneath the barn, there's no way to get to it, and-
That's Peter's here.
Yeah, yeah, and he has had sewage flowing in our-
Is our house, and you need to determine if we need a pump station?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And like I said, all your ground floor levels can flow out gravity. I know the house, we spoke to you two weeks ago, week and a half ago.
Right.
All your ground force can flow out. If you have a finished basement, that would be your only issue.
What is the definition of finished basement?
Uh, slop sink or, or toilet.
Something that needs to flush.
Something that needs to flush.
All we have is a sink.
A sink, a sink would need, if you wanna, wash machine pumps up, that can pump up.
What if you trudge it in the basement?
Possibly wouldn't have a pump station.
What's that?
If we sacrifice a sink, we possibly wouldn't have to have a pump station.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Are there any more questions, any people welcome to stay and, and chat, of course, but any other questions? No? Thank you all so much for coming out, we'll be in touch about future meetings. Well, good luck.
We talked, you know, I'm gonna thank you.
Okay, because, you know what?